Good afternoon to everyone, good evening to everyone. And it's time has come for us to call to order our work session for this afternoon. Mr. Cassisi, are you there? See that?
Sorry, can't ask me yet.
Mr. Cassisi, you there?
I'm here now, yes.
Okay, good afternoon to you. Do we need to read something?
Electron participation, it should be in the back there.
Excuse me. According to the Amherst County Public School Board Policy BDD, a school board member may participate from a remote location due to a medical condition or personal matter that prevents the member's physical attendance with the approval by a majority vote of the members present at the primary meeting location. In order to offer this opportunity to remote board member, a quorum of the board must be physically present at the primary location and arrangements have been made for the voice of the remote participant to be heard by all. Do we have a quorum for the board at this time? Ms. Parliament Chair?
We do.
We do, yes.
Okay. Mr. Cassisi, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, so... Seeing that we have met both the criteria stipulated within the policy BDD at this time, I ask for a motion from the board that Mr. David Cassisi be allowed to participate in this meeting remotely with all the rights of the discussion and voting afforded to him.
So moved.
We have a properly moved, do we have a second?
Second.
They're properly moved and second, then Mr. Cassisi can join us by remote. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, Mr. Cassisi, you're legal.
Thank you.
At this time, we stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. We do a moment of silence for this supposed bombs threat. Let us now do our pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for that. Let the minutes reflect that we are not live streaming, but we are recording this work session tonight. But before I get an approval of the agenda, I have an announcement to make. We would like to do a congratulations at this time. Ms. Cecil, will you start the video?
Congratulations to all the winners. We have two more awards to present.
Yes, we do, and these are both Citizen Awards. The first award is Citizen of the Year. This year's recipient embodies the very essence of determination. Faced with another year of uncertainty, coupled with the responsibility and the awesome responsibility of educating the community's youth, he has continued to lead through unyielding circumstances. Most what you're adding is control, it's unreal. When it comes to education, access, equity, and integrity, he is every child, every day. So it is my honor to announce that Dr. Rob Arnold, Superintendent of the Amherst County Public Schools, is this year's Citizen of the Year.
Excellent. I can't imagine holding it down in this position as superintendent of schools. I can't imagine trying to hold that down during COVID. Amazing.
Yeah, he's got such a great team and it's something he'll let you know how hard everyone around him works to make sure the schools are successful.
Another wonderful surprise, okay? We'd like to congratulate Dr. Arnold for being named Amherst County Citizen of the Year. Those of us who worked in your capacity as Superintendent of Amherst County Public Schools agree that this is a well-deserved recognition. You have brought the school division through a very difficult time and supported not only children in the community, but the families. So we thank you for representing us with the theory of children first. So the board appreciates that. And once again, another hand clap for good news like that. Thank you, Ms. Cecil.
Ms. Wigan, may I say something about that?
Please do.
You know, when you're in a position like this, you take full responsibility for all the things that go wrong, but you don't take credit for the things that go right. The people that need to take credit for all the good things that happen are sitting around us, are in our buildings, doing the real work. And so I'm just blessed to have an amazing team, and I want to thank them tonight, and an amazing staff in our buildings that are taking care of these children. So I just wanted to say that.
Well said, and we appreciate your staff as well. Thank you so much. Now, at this time, 1.02, could I get an approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting? Can I, Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda? All right, Ms. Thompson has been moved in motion. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wazner. All in favor of the agenda for tonight with no exceptions or discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda, thank you so much. I just wanted to make mention of something just before we get started for our work session. I would like to ask that tonight we make sure that we are following our agreed-upon norms, that's the V S B A norm. In the past meetings, several suggestions have been made to change in policies without the entire board voting on them. Our norm, which we agreed to back in February of 2020, says this, that we will hear each opinion, but ultimately act as one. We will speak candidly and courteously to each other and listen to dissenting or different viewpoints with an open mind, and we'll help each other to discern disagreements. Once we reach a decision or compromise as a board, we will each support the will of the board in word and deed. So I'm asking that tonight that we will go by that rule as we kind of go through our norms. With that said, we're going to start right off with 3.01.
So we have listed the current first reads, so what you got as first reads in the beginning of this month at that meeting. So you can grab any of those to discuss or talk about, or if this is just your opportunity to ask specific questions or have a conversation about these six that are presented here.
Okay, we have... Natalia, are you able to put those up? Or let me ask the board, are we going to discuss those tonight, the first reads? You have notes you brought, you prepared to do that? Yes, okay, good.
Yes, yes.
So Natalia, if you would put up, if you don't mind. We're looking at AD.
And I believe, Ms. Thompson, you asked at the last meeting about the legal reference, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so we checked with the V S B A, because when we look at that, it doesn't make sense to the policy. And we were told by them that they had made a mistake by putting that in there. So my recommendation would be we just take it off and move on, unless there are other changes to be made with that. Because I think we've already dealt with the other parts of it.
Okay. Ms. Thompson, is that, and other board members, are we looking at AD at this time?
Madam Chair, Dr. Arnold is correct. We did add the word maximum into the, back into the policy, and then the code at the bottom seemed like it wasn't there, wasn't supposed to fit. And so I was bringing that up again tonight, and he's already confirmed it. So I would make a motion that we adopt the policy, but strike that code.
Well, we'll actually, then, we'll bring it at the October meeting for the second meeting.
So for the first, we made the changes that have just been mentioned. Does the board have any other changes to AD?
We would just need a motion to strike that code section.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, correct.
Is that what you, you made a motion to approve?
You want to second?
You want to amend the motion, though? Because you said to approve the policy, I think, right? Did I understand?
Yeah.
So we need to amend the motion.
I'll amend the motion that we just, for tonight, that we strike the code 22 dot 1 dash 23 dot 2.
Second.
All right, we've heard the motion of striking and adding, and the second by Mr. Wazner. The board in favor, say aye please?
Aye.
Okay, so that is kind of what we were talking about. Dr. Arnold, is that what we were looking to do? To bring back in October?
Yes, ma'am. And the second one, at least under my purview here, is V C A. And I believe what was requested was right there. That says the term of the chair clerk, vice chair, and deputy clerk are one year, but may reside concurrent terms. And I think that the request from the board was that that turned from concurrent to consecutive. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, do y'all want to have discussion about that? Do y'all want to, you know?
I think that's pretty late.
I think it makes more sense to have it consecutive. Concurrent, like, when I, I think of like criminal sentencing. When it's concurrent, they can run together. And what consecutive means, they can follow one another. Which kind of makes more sense with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. So what I would need then is a motion to replace...
Replace the "gag" with consecutive.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we replace the concurrent with the word consecutive in this policy?
Okay, we've heard the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Aye.
A lot of people second it, so it's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, a word change has been noted there. Let us move on to...
So G A A, which would be...
Pull that up again, even though I've looked at it multiple times tonight.
G A A was the one that, there was question about the overtime and compensatory time. And when we looked at it the first time, they had taken out the word, I believe it was compensatory time. They then had some changes in the law, and they put the exact language back. So this technically, you don't have to vote on it because it just looks like the current policy that we have. So that, everything that they changed in the language, it went back to the language. And so if there are issues with the initial language, then that's what we can discuss. Because there's no differences in what we currently have in our policy handbook and that. There would have been a decision, but they...
They went back.
They went back, yeah.
With that knowledge from the superintendent, are there any additional comments on that policy? Any other changes that we've been noting? Okay, so that's the second read as well, am I right?
Yes.
I'm just trying to go through it.
It will go through.
So we bring that back in October, hopefully they vote to approve.
Yeah, the K K, K N, K P, D J F. Dr. Wells will answer any questions that you have. These are the sex offender. And we've given you the legal counsel's information. You've seen it several times, and so...
Yeah, I'll do my best to answer your questions.
Miss, I'm trying to remind myself, what were the questions pertinent to that policy before?
Well, a lot of it was over the use of the terminology of tiers.
Yes.
Because the federal law changed the tiers, and it didn't line up with what our old policy stated. So, but what our attorney explained to us was that the tier, either tier one or tier three, whichever one...
Tier three is the most extreme.
Right, and that matched the, what's it called?
I'll have to look.
Yeah, it's a... The sex offender, it's the...
The egregious?
I don't, egregious is, what was it?
Sexually violent. Sexually violent.
Sexually violent, that's the word, yeah. Yeah, and so basically saying that it doesn't change who has access to our schools. The tiering system is just a way to align with the federal government. So that doesn't, that doesn't change anything. The other issue was whether or not that the board wanted to have procedures written by me. Right? Because this one, I believe, gave, is giving the authority of superintendent to adopt procedures in how to handle the dissemination of sex registry information. So currently, we distribute it to all the pertinent employees, but this would require you guys to decide whether I need to write that out and produce that plan. I would think it would be a regulation attached to this policy. And so I think I'm trying, I think I got that right. Does anybody?
I think you're right, Dr. Arnold. I think the attorney did a really nice job of explaining it. And the first area that he said that the policy had to change was the dissemination of sex offenders' registry information. And they're going from a very detailed descriptive policy that tells you how to do that, giving you the ability, like you said, to do a regulation and develop that policy. I mean, I feel like if we want local control, that that can be a good thing.
Yeah.
But I would be uncomfortable with removing and changing the policy as it is without that regulation in place, because then we would have a time period in which we didn't really have good policy.
Right.
So, I mean, that, I felt like, from my perspective...
Well, we currently have the one in place that allows us to continue doing what we're doing, which I think everybody's comfortable with right now.
So you're just going to continue doing the same thing that you were doing under the old policy and adopt this?
Yeah, so my take on this is that I would just take the language from the original policy that talks about the procedures that the school system needs to follow and just make that a regulation. And I think that'll meet the requirements. I think then that gives you, you guys, the ability to look at what those procedures are. But I can certainly, I'm not sure what the... I don't, I don't know if any language needs to be changed in the policy itself. It's just a matter of how y'all want a regulation to look like. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think if we adopt, eventually adopt this new policy, it would require you to write a regulation, which you may just want to cut and paste the old policy to that regulation.
Yeah, because I don't think what we're doing is inappropriate. I think, I think we're very safe as far as that's concerned.
Well, remember, my recommendation would be if we bring this back, that we have that current policy as a regulation along with this. And then there's a part B to it that the attorney mentioned, and that was what Dr. Arnold referenced, was the tiering. And the sexually violent offenses went an extra step. For those sexual offenders, it was beyond just getting principals permission. You had to get court permission. Well, now it has tier one, two, and three. And tier three, you still have to get court permission. So it sounds like it's the same. But here was my one question that I'd like to have answered before next time. The attorney said that the tier three in this new policy and the sexually violent offenses in the old policy are roughly analogous. I don't know if I said that right. But typically, they're roughly the same thing. Well, roughly to me means that they're not exactly the same thing. So I just would like to know what sexually violent offenses are in the old policy that are now in tier two or one?
And I believe, I don't know if you mentioned it in here on that, but I believe there is a place that we can go and, yeah, and compare them, the State Police website. And so we can pull down those things and let you see a comparison?
Because I did, I did go to the State Police website, and I found the tiers. I couldn't find the old, but I may just not have known where to look.
I may need to look at form code?
Yeah.
And pull the old code of Virginia to determine what this...
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that's absolutely not a problem.
So I can, you can pull the code.
Well, I think everybody just needs to feel comfortable. That there's not somebody, not a group of people that get through the cracks in some way.
But that was the piece of, if I could get that answered, and like you said, if I felt comfortable, then I could vote for that. Then there was a third piece to it that was about access, an exception, that sexual offenders could access school property if they are a registered voter while we're voting. And I know we typically close schools. But do we ever have schools open, like for primaries, in which...
It's happened with, like, special elections types of things.
Right, so I'm thinking...
But they would, they would have to request permission. I mean, they can't, just because you're voting, they can't just walk in the door. They still would have to request permission for lots of...
When schools are open.
So...
That's how I interpret it.
So we would, we would then, we would...
Can you, can you pull it up?
Accompany or monitor that person?
Because I almost was thinking that it was an exception that on those days, and I don't know that the exception said what we had to do. But my solution was, we could close schools on those days.
And that would, because if you get in the pattern or the habit of voting on a general election without having to get that permission, I think it, I don't think they're going to seek the permission in the event of a special election or a primary.
It would be much easier on our schools if we, like, this past year, the election was in June. Typically, we're not in school that late into the year. But because of how we had to adjust our calendar, it requires, we had to go through some, jump through some hoops just to have students away from the polling areas. It would make life much easier on me and on the principals and stuff in the schools if we knew there's going to be a special election, that we could do something to alter our schedule. But then we'd have to look at what day is that going to be and how are we going to, you know, make those hours up at some point. But if we know far enough in advance, that's something we could probably work into our calendar, but we have to work the board of elections on that.
But typically, that would probably be on, what, May, and June, and then November?
His last one was June, but they did one special one last, in June this year. Then last year, there was a special election day for one of the primaries that they did something different into. So I just have to get with, we just have to really work with the board of elections. And if they give it to us far enough in advance, I think we could work it. But if it's one of these that, like, if it gets very adept and had to do a special election for, you know, to fill a seat, then it might be something more difficult for us to work with.
I think that would be a safe thing, is just to close the schools on the days of those elections, just to mitigate the possible... I don't see somebody seeking out to ask you to come in there for five minutes to vote, or whatever else they would be on site for.
Yeah. And that's y'all's purview, that's something we can discuss.
We would need maybe a policy or...
I think you could handle that in your regulation, because...
Okay.
I mean, it says the exception to vote, but it doesn't mean, like, we still don't want someone just to walk into the building. And so we would try to close schools, but if that's not possible, then we would have to be notified by them, a sex offender. And then we would have S R O or somebody, you know, we would make sure that it is done in a way that our children are safe.
So we're looking at...
So what we're going to do is bring back some information that compares old and new designations of sex offenders. And then, do y'all want a regulation? Or do you want it next time?
Personally, I would like it the next time, so that I know that I'm voting on this, and that's going to go along with it.
Yeah, and I guess, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, we could do that.
So that's where you were referencing the attempt to make schools close, close schools? You were putting it in that regulation that they discussed?
No, the regulation is, goes back to the dissemination. But we can include the dissemination and different procedures as well. Yeah, so we could talk through that exact same thing that you, you're talking about.
And as far as the norms, is that something you want, we should vote on, click? If that would be the wish of the board?
No, I think I could bring it to you.
Bring it to us.
Yeah, I think we could, because the regulation is different than the policy. So I can bring you the regulation, so you can look at them together.
And then vote on it.
And vote on the policy.
Well, do... Okay. And then we, then we would be voting on it just from my perspective, based on the fact of, do we have any sexually violent offenses in tier two or one?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and then, we had G C N, which is Mr. Gallagher's. And I think that one was the one that was about the professional development. And it was about the culturally responsive teaching that the state is requiring. But we still, to this point, haven't received anything from the Department of Ed. And I really don't anticipate them doing anything.
Well, I'll look back at it. They have not put anything out. And the requirement is that they provide information regarding the scope of that training that will be for all personnel, you know, within the division regarding culturally responsive practices and so forth, equitable practices and so forth.
I would suggest we don't do anything with the policy until y'all get to see the guidance. And then y'all can then make decisions about this policy to deal with the guidance.
And I think I provided some information in the past and one of the superintendent's members outlined the different facets of it, which we can provide again, just so you know, the different areas that it impacts once that does come. Because the training will impact evaluation in the training that's required for teachers and all employees, and also for licensure, so as we talked about. But I've been monitoring, so we'll be proactive as soon as anything begins to come out. Certainly, we can share that with you without question. And it does indicate that it has to be by December 31st. They have to at least outline what it's going to look like, the requirements. Training is supposed to be provided in the spring of 2022. So they'll have a big lift to push that stuff out and to provide us information, but nothing has been done yet.
Well, I agree that we won't need to do anything until we see that. Is that your recommendation?
Right, and we're not going to put anything in place until, you know, do see that guidance.
So do we need to vote to take it off the read?
Actually, it's not the first read. The only first read is the ones about...
Okay, okay.
So that's not even coming to us yet.
Okay.
All right, well, we now...
Yeah, we took it off the page, right. Dr. Norman with school counseling.
Thank you, sir. You had requested information regarding the school counseling policy. It's I J Guidance and Counseling Program. And basically, it was in relationship to the opt-out information that I provided you at the last board meeting. The question was whether or not our parents have the ability to opt their children out of any school counseling program. And under policy I J, you have provided that opportunity for parents. No student is required to participate in the counseling program to which the student's parents object. There's five different ways that they can opt out of any of the programs. They do not have to opt out all total. They can actually cherry pick and select which is beneficial to them and which they do not want to participate in. And then one of the things that they do have, you do have in your policy is that parents may elect by notifying the child's school in writing to have their child not to participate in any personal or social counseling that takes place in the school environment. And that was just information for you. There was no change unless you'd like to have this brought before you for a review.
I didn't have anything on that. The board have anything added to what Dr. Norman has said?
Tom, I appreciate the information. One thing that I would like to know is, you know, what type of numbers are we looking at? How many of our parents are opting out? And where are they opting out of? That may be some type of a summary data sometime in the near future.
Yes, ma'am, I could pull that from our IFOS now, if parent registration, where they can opt out there. We can pull that, and I believe that actually is in the SCUDA program too, maybe.
No, but we can pull that from our school, from the...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one that's not on the, up for first... Okay, the next one that's not on the, up for first, or second, second read is, is C H. Let me go to it real quick, make sure. This one was the one about policy implementation. And I don't, I don't know what the discussion is going to be, but somebody asked for it to be reviewed, and so.
What, what was this about?
It was about the development of regulations. And it says, "School Board Authorizes Superintendent to Create and Update Regulations Necessary to Carry Out Policies Adopted by the Board." If board action is required by law or the board asks that certain regulations or types of regulations be approved by the board, the superintendent will present those regulations to the board for action. Superintendent makes all regulations available to school board members, employees, and the public and sees that the regulations are placed in the school board policy manual or are kept with the policy manual.
I don't see anything wrong with that statement. Was there someone who had?
We just revised it back in the office, right?
Yeah, I thought we had.
We were just going from, from minutes of notes.
Okay.
So if there's nothing there, that's fine.
Move on, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there was anything there. I think we were just asking what the policy was.
Okay.
Does that?
Okay. I F, which is the curriculum, and so I F is the policy. What you asked me to do is work on the regulation. And there's been several updates and rewrites, and so we just want to know, we just need to know what insertions or deletions are in that regulation that you're all agreed upon so I can put this specific language in that's going to allow us to move forward with this.
Board discussion on that?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make sure the policy I F, if I go back to the summer in July, it had the big words draft on it. I noticed the words draft have been removed, but I could not find where we had approved it. So I believe it's still up for, as a read. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, 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 it's not, it's not up for any decision on your part yet because it's a regulation, right? And so, and I think.
But I F is policy.
Yeah, right. The, the draft that was on there.
It was a clerical error. It was a watermark. So when I went to insert the request of changes to bring it to the September 19th meeting, I just didn't really insert the draft watermark.
Oh.
Yeah, so nothing has been implemented because we, we know we're still working on the language of it.
Right. Well, I know we don't have that, apparently, we don't have policy I F up for draft. But one of the things that we had talked about, Board, and I know we haven't made a decision on it, but one of the things that we talked about was that the, the teachers that would be teaching these, the policy that we're creating, the curriculum we're creating, I felt that we needed to make sure we had a teacher that was employed by Amity County Public Schools and that they were up underneath our division's annual evaluation process so that we have some authority in that area. So I felt like, just in my notes, my thinking this was on a draft, I thought that would be a perfect place to put it because policy I F R, the regulation, is about the development of the curriculum, not the teaching of the curriculum. So I guess my recommendation would be if we wanted to adjust policy I F, then we would have to bring it back.
Yeah, can I look and see if there's another policy that makes more sense for that to live in? You know what I'm saying? That, that might talk about instruction and, and kind of qualifications and things like that. I think, I think that it would make more sense to put it in a place like that that talks about, it's like a, a human resource. But maybe, maybe if you'll give us the opportunity to kind of find that and show it to you, and then, and then you can adjust that one. Just, just because this one is so tied to just the, the, the language and the code that says, "Our curriculum and the adoption of the curriculum has to meet or exceed the state standards in the, in the Code of Virginia." So, you know, that, that's really what that is, telling boards that they have to meet certain standards in their curriculum. What the regulation is, is about is when they don't, when it's not under the Code of Virginia or the Board of Education or the Standards of Learning, that the regulation is about how then we address those types of things. But, so something, so right now, right now, social emotional learning is a recommendation, right? It's a recommendation because it's still in draft form for the state. That would be something that would fall under this if we chose to, to go down the road with a S E L curriculum, okay? Then, but it's in draft form and it's only a recommendation because it's not yet a, it not been approved, I guess. And so then it would fall back in the upper bucket of under code and S O L and some of that kind of thing. So the, are, the regulation is to, to give oversight over things that are not regulated by the, the D O E. So, and I, but I know that there's a lot of language that was, was suggested to add and take away in that regulation, so.
So the beginning of this conversation, if we're going to see if there's a better place to put the suggestion of.
That's my recommendation, because I just think there's a, a better place to do it.
On instructional, H R?
And maybe, maybe I'm not understanding. Put on the employment side, typically, the curriculum comes out of committees. Is that, so I guess every, are you saying like everybody on that committee should be employed or licensed or kidney? That's, that's why I was, I was trying to figure out.
I think she's talking about who teaches it.
Oh, who teaches it. I'm sorry. I thought, I was understanding who was developing.
Yeah, and that's why I want to look under H R policies.
Got you.
Yeah.
Understood.
So we talk about the, the language additions or changes to that regulation. That way you guys can, you can vote on that and then I can put it specifically in it.
Board members, one of the things that, when I was trying to read through it, I was noticing that this is a Curriculum Development Committee, and they're going to develop that, that curriculum per se. But then there were other places that it talked about a review committee. And I, I felt like maybe that was one in the same. But then it got me to thinking that, you know, when Dr. Arnold wrote this language, he's pulling together people that are experts in the field, you know, that have knowledge. And they're going to come together and they're going to do what they think is best for that field or that curriculum. But then there is another piece to it, which is talking about our community, our parents, our shared values. So I took some of the language in here that, that Dr. Arnold had used and sort of formed two committees. Like you have your Curriculum Development Committee, but then you form a review committee that would be like a consulting or a subcommittee that they would use that might consist of, you know, the citizens, the civic groups, the, not, not the content specialists per se. And let them do that review so that there's feedback and communication before it gets to us and out to the public. So that was sort of how I went with that. And I was just trying to seek some clarity in the difference between the usage of development committee.
Right, well, I'll tell you this. It's, it just the, it all needs to be development, right? Because the review team is you guys, and y'all get to look at it over a long period of time. We have public comments and people can speak to it. So that's kind of what I had in mind. I just don't think I would use curriculum review. I think that, that's a mistake I made, not keeping those things, the exact same thing. This was, this is really about curriculum development. People develop the curriculum and then we put it out there and they have a public comment section that you guys have a, have two reads, you know, the same kind of thing. So I felt like that gave enough input into, into that. But that's certainly up to you guys to decide.
Is there a need to have any discussion on, on the teaching piece, the licensing, the employee? Or are we, are we moving off of that? I just want to make sure I'm not wasting time.
I guess we need to come to a consensus if we want that.
Well, I, devil's advocate, what if you had a welding class and Baker Steel has some kind of person over there specially to do certified and doing some kind of laminate being, and they want to come do a period of instruction to our welders for that new process or technique? Wouldn't this policy prohibit them from teaching them anything because they're not employed or am I misunderstanding that?
In my mind, it would not because this policy is just for that curriculum that's outside of the Virginia Standards of Learning. And, you know, if you're talking about your welding curriculum, that's already in place, already approved. This would be teaching new, newly developed curriculum that's outside of the state's.
Okay. Just want to make sure I wrap my head around that. And also, any kind of historical speaker or anything like that, that would, that wouldn't prohibit. We wouldn't be barring, you know, I don't know, somebody, is Starbucks still doing the museum over here? Or somebody from, or Sandy Esposito with the, you know, that does a lot of historical research in the county. Somebody like that, it would keep them from, it wouldn't keep them from coming and giving a presentation to the class, would it?
That's not, I probably don't think so. We've always allowed volunteers to come in.
I just want to make sure I understand that.
So then it really needs to be somewhere in this regulation. If that's, if that's what you, if that's the intent when you're talking about non-S O L, non.
Right, and you do have a policy, it's G C N, I think that's what it is, where it talks about part-time teachers, substitute teachers, home down teachers, where you can actually designate in that particular policy that people who are in the classroom providing instructions like a C T E, guest speaker or instructor, we have those from C B C C who come in and do that all the time. But you can actually add that into that particular policy so it doesn't have to sit in this policy. You would need to change that policy around a little bit, but it's, I think it would be a better place than regarding the curriculum development piece of it.
I don't know, did it address as guests as much as teaching curriculum standards outside of the state standards, right? So just who's qualified to teach curriculum standards when the division outside those determined by the state.
Correct.
Is qualified, that could fall under a couple of different areas, professional staff, G C. If you look at professional development, we've got G C L, probably G C might be the place. But we can take, we can look at all of them and see what's.
Well, yeah, what the, what my request was, was to be able to bring back to you what the best place to put it is. And I would, I would like to give Mr. Gallagher an opportunity to search through the human resources.
I think another thought that I had during the week was that in this process, I think that it's important to have our teachers also have good input into this as it's being developed. So, I mean, I would like to see, even if we shot for one teacher per school, instead of just one teacher on a committee. I just think it would give, you know, they have the boots on the ground, they know the kids, then each of the buildings are informed. You just get more collective.
Yeah, you just don't want it to be super big group, president of kids, unwell. What if we do something like one elementary, one middle, one hospital?
Yeah, like for, or for grade band, yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Where the word gets out, you sort of have that dialogue.
So that's, that's in, right, where the group is, it's in that first paragraph. So it, it lays out what the committee should be made up of. So it says, one, it says, does it just say teachers or?
Yeah, it just says teachers.
So we could say one teacher per level, you know, we could do that.
So we need a motion on that.
Well, I guess just a thought, if it's simply that goes with like a high school area curriculum, you wouldn't need them to bring in elementary, middle, per se. So it might need to just be specific to the content that you're discussing as opposed to just saying one per grade, one per band, just because it may not apply.
Right, I guess that could be something that looks like that, but maybe then you write in teachers specific to the actual curriculum. Are there other places that we're looking at?
I also think it's important, which I don't think it's stated in here, that this committee will be looking at shared values. And I know that that is important to me. I think it's important to our citizens. So I hate to leave that out, like I didn't want to leave out the teacher voice. I don't know where you would want to put that in, but.
I would think it would go where it says in selecting committee members for division, who reflect the ethnic, maybe geographical.
Demographic.
I'm not sure exactly what the word would be, but it needs to be the word that you're talking about. Do you might have any ideas on what that would actually be? Because that's where it should go. Because you're looking for the diversity of our community.
Geographical.
To be able to provide different perspectives.
Well, you got ethnic and geographic position of the school division. So you wanted to put something else there?
Well, she's talking about shared values.
Yeah, so a word that you have for that. I mean, I know what it means. I'm just trying to think of what could be there in that same comma.
I had suggested the Curriculum Development Committee will seek to understand and include shared values of our community by holding a, a public input session prior to the development of such curriculum and develop and articulate shared values of the community and families resulting from the input session.
Where did you place that?
Well, that's up in the, in, in my notes, just at the top. So it was, it's probably not in the right place, but you might be able to take some of that verbiage and move it around in there.
So does every board member have what you, you're reading off of?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we can kind of touch each one and either vote as a block or you want to talk about different ones. But the last thing I want to do is, is if a couple of you disagree with one of them and you, you kill the whole motion just because of one or two things that you don't agree with. So I would think that we have to make that decision, and so.
Well, I guess I could say, Board, I would like to make motion that we include, the purpose of this committee is to seek input and find shared values before the development of the curriculum, wherever it gets put in there.
Now, are you talking about the language that says, "At least one teacher representative from each school, the Curriculum Development Committee will seek to understand and include shared values?" Because at that point, then we're, we're changing what the committee is. So if you got a high school curriculum and then you have, like, I guess, wouldn't we want to say at least, or at least one teacher representative from the appropriate grade bands? If we're going to look at this specific language, because that's what I want from you guys, is to give me the specific language so we don't do this every two weeks.
Just thinking from the process, would, wouldn't it be better for, to get the community input once, once at least a draft or some kind of, to, to be able to hone in on the discussion rather than just? I'm just, I don't, I'm trying to envision how this, this input would, would come about prior to any kind of work by a committee, but it might be more productive after to get feedback on what was developed before it was implemented. So I just, I'm just thinking about, it's kind of like any type, it's like going into a meeting without an agenda. If you didn't have an agenda, it could get very broad and all, just trying to keep comments focused and productive. I just think it would, it would make more sense to gather that maybe after, based on, but obviously not to implement anything until we get that feedback, but to give them some discussion points.
My perspective is if you're getting ready to go do some purposeful work, you need to know what it is you're going to do and you need to know where you're going to go with it and what it's going to entail. I would never want to get a group of people together and. I would never want to get a group of people together and get around the table and find out I went to the left and I should have gone, you know, two stories higher. I mean, to me, you need to have that, you need to know what you're going to write your curriculum for, what's the purpose? What's it going to contain? We've got policy that says our curriculum is going to be by grade level. It says it's going to have what the students need to know and how they're going to need to know it. So, before we go to that extent, I would think that we would have some, I would rather have some input from the community to make sure we're heading in the right direction. And let's suppose it was something that we brought up and there was no desire to have it at all. Why are we doing it? And I doubt that that would be the case. But to me, there would be some conversation. You're going to build a house, let's have a conversation about what you want in it before you build it.
I can see it both ways, but I think you're right. You can't just, can't just go too half-tas. What are we doing right now, Dr. Arnold?
What are we doing?
I mean, I said it wrong. In our curriculum planning, what are we doing right now? I kind of know what we're doing because I've been on the committee, but go ahead.
Well, we have several. I mean, our curriculum committees are specific to our standards.
Okay, so that's where I was going. First of all, we have that.
Right.
So, the people that have chosen to be on that committee.
We have.
They know their expectations.
Yes, they're set by the state.
That's, that's the first thing you were talking about, describing. Okay. So, we just don't pull people together and have a clue of what's going to happen.
Correct.
And then?
And then anything that is established as a non-standard based. The state gives you guidance on who is selected, which is what Dr. Arnold has utilized. Teachers, division, division level content specialists, any kind of community involvement that we have. And then there is a guidelines that the state kind of says, this is how you should tackle this. And they usually give you a draft of something to start with. Now, if it's something that the board chooses to, you want to teach tic-tac-toe or basket weaving and there's no curriculum whatsoever, then we would hopefully use the same process that's established. And I think that's what you're trying to get to here tonight of what that is.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a process of the establishment of it. That's kind of what you were saying and your boss saying the same thing here. But you wanted, what did you want to add to that?
I, I want to add that there's a purpose.
Bringing your attention to add to it.
I want to add that the, the committee will be seeking to understand the community's shared values as they're develop, going about developing this committee. I'm going to be blunt. I think that's where we went wrong before.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that we do that.
But it sounds like what you were talking about is already covered. Is that correct?
My hand to bring it up.
Gathering of people to get a rock. And then we have the other group who wants to polish the rock. So, I think we already have that piece established. So, I don't know that we need to put that into this at that point. We do probably need to figure out at what grade levels or how we want the, the teacher portion put in there. But I think we already have that covered. When I, when I was something that was getting that feedback on what was developed of, doing it after rather than before, it seems like, my thought was it seems like we're doing it on the front end. And then, and just as far as getting that public feedback, having it productive and fruitful. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just, because if you just, to me, I just, it's always best to have it focused. What, what kind of feedback? Well, this particular item here, this is what we're proposing to teach, this is what, all right? So, what's your thoughts on that? Rather than just having the shotgun approach, I just, again, I'm all about efficiency and I just wanted to make sure that, that it just kind of followed logic. But I do understand and can see where Mrs. Thompson's coming from. I was just, from my perspective, when I looked at it, I'd rather have it on the back end than in the front end. But it definitely needs to be a part of the development. So.
I mean, I, I agree with you that we want a review on the back end and we want that feedback. And that is in the policy that Dr. Arnold's laying in front of us. I would like to add just that on the front end, that as we're starting to build it, that we have that conversation about what are those shared values of our community before we move forward. And where we put that in is what I think we're talking about or if we are going to put that in.
What is the direction? I mean, I think we both, all of us have heard what we're talking about. It's just where does it go?
Well, I think you, I think you would adopt, you would ask a motion to, for the piece and just let them put it in there and see where it falls.
Bring it back and have us look at it.
Make a, I guess what we're arguing or talking about, discussing is to put it, put it in, yes.
So, again, hey, sorry, I'm, as best as I can hear the conversation. So, Abby, are you, are you asking, you're asking to put it in the front end to get feedback. Is there a way we can structure that a little bit more other, rather than, because if, if we just put it in kind of like that, it sounds like it might be a free-for-all and we might not get anywhere. I think that's kind of what John's talking about a little bit. But is there a way to structure it so that it's, it's kind of more focused? As, if we do put it in on the front end, that it's a very focused in session or input from the community or whatever it might be so that it doesn't go, you know, too far out of bounds?
So, can I make one suggestion? Just if you're truly looking for shared values and you have a committee of eight, is that truly a group of shared? My, my point being, can you construct something that's survey that goes out to a much larger group of people? And then you can then distill that information for their work. That would, that would save from an efficiency standpoint, but it would also allow us to get more feedback than eight people. And then that's going to be, well, what eight people are we going to ask? And, you know, it just gets really cumbersome that way. And so, just a, just a thought.
I think that's a good idea.
Survey's good.
I like that. I think it's a good idea. What do y'all, what do you say, Ms. Ryan and Ms. Tom?
Uh, cumbersome is the word I was trying to find.
Yeah.
Because you were talking about like three different committees.
Trying not to do that.
You know, the curriculum committee, the review committee, and then there was something else. Maybe it's to, the nominations for the committees are solicited from the superintendent and approved by the school board. That's before any work gets done, right?
I think so.
And, and Ms. Right, you said that, you know, Dr. Arnold's original did not have two different committees.
Yeah.
It just referenced it in two different ways.
Right. It was meant to be.
So, he's recommending to stick to one. I think the consensus of what we're starting to hear is maybe do a survey, get your, get the committee in place.
Yeah.
Then do a survey before the work starts.
But your notes in orange talk about the curriculum committee developing a review committee.
Right, but that's when I was processing this.
Oh, okay.
And there was two different languages in there. And so, that's how I thought he was going with it.
Oh, okay.
But he clarified tonight it was just one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I heard him with that, but I thought this was something different. Who's nominating the people?
I'm going to seek people. You guys are going to vote on it.
Okay.
So, my, my, I did, my thought is that I'm representative of our community, of our school buildings and that kind of thing, which gives you all oversight of that. Then we send out a survey with the rationale, right? Because we, we want to, we want to make sure you all understand the rationale, but so does our community. And then we structure our survey around what we're trying to accomplish. Then we distill the information. They get to work. They produce something. Then there's, it's put out there for public comment. And you guys hear a first read and then we go through the, we can ask questions, we can clarify. And then it's a second read. And then it would be put into place. And then, and then I think another question Ms. Thompson asked was, well, what, what happens if you guys don't pass it? Then we would go back to square one and start over. But I would hope that during the first read, if there are egregious things on, in your minds that we can at least fix, work to fix it before it just all gets wiped out and you've got to go back to the beginning and start all over. That's my, that's my thoughts. I certainly can write it that way.
Well, that's kind of what we do anyway, you know.
Yeah.
Devise, read and change and adopt.
I think this is giving you guys oversight.
Yeah.
I like, I like that model.
Yeah.
Do you, do you want that in a motion or is that something?
Well, we have to give them, give them, yeah, to go ahead to, to put it into.
Yeah, I think we're mostly there.
Yeah, I think so too.
So, I guess we, so I, I would move to, to prepare, to form.
To adjust.
Adjust this based on the model that we just, that you just discussed and see what that looks like in writing. Would that, would that be?
Yeah.
So, I make a motion that we, we proceed with a draft of a policy based on the model that you just discussed. Dr. Arnold?
Would we have this in there?
Excuse me?
The, the changes that you were talking about, would that be implemented in the new policy?
No, I don't think so. I think those were the thoughts that I had coming into tonight's meeting. And then we had talked about one committee, made some adjustments to who would be on that committee, then do a survey before the work begins in order to get the value and the input of our community. Up front. And I think that would be something he would add to this up here. And, and I, and I have been continuing to make, and I don't know that I know where y'all want to go with this as a board, so I'll say it one more time. Well, never mind, never mind.
There's a motion, Tom.
Never mind. I, I, I answer my own question.
So, at this point, somebody either has a second or, or not.
Mr. CC asked.
Thank you, Ms. CC. Y'all in favor? Uh, you opposed? Bring that back for that.
I think, yeah, and I think the one, I don't know if it's the last, but one I know was about the notification of why it was not approved.
Yes, we said that as far as making that available for public, did we discuss, discuss that at another meeting?
Right, we did, but it's.
Well, the only concern I had, that I mentioned last time, was if there was a reason, which I'll be honest, I can't think of one right now. But somebody said to me, why are you boxing yourself in? And I thought, well, the only reason I can understand would be that had something to do with a closed session topic. But I can't imagine what that would be.
I mean, I don't think, if it's a closed session topic, writing policy.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be about anybody. It's not going to be. Yeah, I've, I've struggled to figure that out and, you know, I think part of this too is thinking about future boards as well. Because you guys are putting this in place and then five years from now, you might not be here. Not, not being more, but I just, you know, things change. And, and then another board comes in and what, where are they with that? And so, and like I said the last time, I was just following the state model. That's how the state chooses to be transparent with everybody that's been involved in the process.
Okay.
So, y'all have a motion in a second. Um, y'all have done that?
Yeah, we've done it.
So, do y'all want me to do anything with shall maybe, what was the verbiage? May, I think that's what you said. So, where it says it shall post such reasons on its website? I think they, what you had said last meeting was to change that to may.
Yeah, I've just been trying to wrap my brain around what somebody said to me. And so, I thought, well, you could put may in case one of those odd things were to arise. Or, you know, do you put a disclaimer that pertained to closed session information or do you just leave it? I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, the only thing I think you should do is to say unless such reason is a closed session matter. I think that would, that would get you where you want to get. Because may, may then let you guys just say.
It gets too much.
Well, if it's exempt under FOIA, could, would that be a good catch-all? I mean.
I would, maybe I would lay out like personnel, legal matters, that kind of thing.
Which are exempt under FOIA.
Right. I'm just saying. No, I was just trying.
I always like a big umbrella that can, that shall unless exempt under FOIA, which would cover possible un-thought-of concerns that Ms. Thompson was taking in the mouth, so.
Why couldn't you just say where applicable under current regulations or policy? Instead of defining something, if you make it too narrow, then you're.
Oh, yeah, you definitely will place yourself in a corner.
Yeah. I mean, you could just say it shall post such reasons on its website where applicable with current regulations and policies.
I mean, because, because that would be FOIA and that would be, you know, could be another, could be a legal matter.
See, a motion is right.
That has to be a motion.
Make that motion.
Yeah, you've got to make that because I've already done the other one.
Okay. Is this paragraph, is it, was it the same?
Lesson.
Every lesson. Okay. I make a motion that the last sentence be amended to say after website, where applicable under current regulations and policies.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. And the last one on policy is BDDHR slash KDR. This was the public comment on that abroad and what I asked at the last meeting was, you know, it's a wide range of options there. And just kind of, I, I think we need to get you guys to say, we want this out and want this to stay in or, or just to say, we like the policy the way it is.
Which was it? BD what?
BD, D, BDH. Yeah, and it's a regulation. But it's not in our policy man. So, it's going to be, I guess it'll be in the work hours.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll start it. Um, oh, and that wasn't obviously at the last meeting, but I don't, now, so I don't know if this was discussed, but the, and I guess the very first part, wish to appear, contact superintendent's office by noon, one business day prior to the scheduled meeting. Does that mean that if somebody wishes to speak and they don't do that, they can't speak at the next meeting?
That's correct.
I, I, I don't know that I like that because there's been a couple of times where things come out kind of, or at least people are aware kind of last minute.
And Mr. CC, to give you some background knowledge, legal counsel for us is the same for Campbell County and the same for Appomattox County. And as you've seen across the state and the nation, the board meetings have gotten a little unruly. And so, we were all looking for ways to kind of get a little bit of control back.
Well, well, I, I would say with, with that is that, you know, this, I don't want to, even if I don't like what they're saying, and that tends to be the, what's happening is, is you got some, you know, viewpoints from all over. And even though I don't like, I still think they deserve a right to come say what they want to say. And then, you know, if we, if we're going to rebut it and say that we want them to be on the list so we can prepare information, well, we, we don't engage in discussion. We just listen to their comments. So, there's really no debate there. We're just listening to comments. So, I, I don't know if that would be a, a valid point in my opinion to, to, to need to have them to pre-register. I just, I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with how we're doing it. I mean, as long as people are respectful, those parameters, you know, they're not threatening, they're not using profanities. They're keeping that time limit to three minutes, those kind of things. I think they're perfectly, perfectly reasonable. But to try to say it with somebody, because I can't tell you how many times I've had people call me up the day of the meeting and said, you know, I think I'm going to come speak. And, you know, they wouldn't have been able to do that if, if they, if, if we'd had made them re-register.
Yeah. Can I do something?
Sure.
Can I read what BD, the. Can I read what B D D H currently says? Because this, at this point, you can just say, let's keep it. Members of the community are invited and encouraged to attend meetings of the Amherst County School Board to observe its deliberations. Any member of the community may address the board on matters related to the Amherst County Public Schools at any regular meeting as follows. Persons wishing to address the school board are requested to contact the superintendent, the school board chair, or their designated for placement on the agenda. The chair is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and rules on such matters as the appropriateness of the subject being presented and length of time for such presentation. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker shall address the chair and, if at the conclusion of the speaker's remarks, any member desires further information, the member will address the speaker only with the permission of the chair. No one is allowed to make additional presentations until everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to make an initial presentation.
So that's for an agenda item, but this said, public comment's already a pre-templat agenda, so like if you're, if they're trying to make.
This is public.
This is the public participation of the school board.
Okay.
That's what our current policy says. That's B D D H. And then what I was presenting was a regulation to, to give it some more structure.
So the intent of that wasn't, it doesn't say public comment, did it, on, on that policy? I think that, because when you say agenda, that, to me, that's getting a bullet, a 2.03 or 2.04, but public comment's already on the agenda, so they don't need to register with us to come talk to, or say what they want to say.
No, according to our current policy, it says they're requested to contact superintendent, school board chair, or their designated.
Sure.
For placement on the agenda, so I get, I understand that, that's requested, that doesn't make sense.
I'm, I'm okay with like the language of, if you want to say requested, or should contact the superintendent's office, but us, I, I, I don't like how we're, um, limiting that part of it. I under, I understand why, because, I mean, you know, we got beat down, beat down a few times already, but that's, I, I think, I, I'm wondering if the unintended effect of, if we move forward with this is, we're going to have even more of a rise because we're stifling their, their, their right essentially, their, their ability to speak. Now, I, I understand they have other opportunities, but, um, again, most, most people aren't going to be thinking, uh, a week or so out, especially if the, um, if the agenda doesn't come out, uh, because, you know, a lot of times we, we might see the regular agenda, but we don't have a lot of details for a few days. And if you're not looking exactly at that time, uh, it, it may be too late. So I, I think we use more language like should or request that.
Well, it says are requested, meaning shall. And so.
Right, well, and, and, and what, and what you just read, but not in, not in the current, uh, proposal, right?
Right, what I read was what we currently have and what I guess I want to know at this point is, y'all want to just keep that and move on and leave it to the chair to, uh, make people abide by courtesy and de, deform?
I think so.
That's what, that's what our current policy allows for.
Well, I've got a couple of emails, um, you know, of course, and conversations about not restricting, um, public comment.
Yeah.
And so I'm okay with that. The, the reason this even came about, and I don't think we need to be too lengthy on this, is as long as we have the, the part in here about proper, um, language and time, we do have to have a time constraint on, um, and all that sort of thing, I think the other part can stay the same, um, and not have people calling their head.
So I guess maybe a motion might be.
Well, I think we also need to make sure that it, we're there to address the board, not other members in the, in the room.
And that, that's what I'm saying.
We've seen that happen.
Yeah, that's, that's how this came about, and I see that it's in here.
But that then falls on Ms. Logan.
Yeah.
To stop it right when it passes.
Or whoever.
Yeah.
But, I mean, as long as, and that's all we need to get out here, that's it. I said that last time.
Madam Chair.
Leave the same, right?
You don't.
Madam Chair.
Well, yeah, I mean, because if y'all, I think the motion would be.
To squash this one.
Regulation.
Yes, ma'am.
There is one thing that I'd like to see, and that is that the time at the podium not be used for any kind of campaign or, um, promotion of a business.
Well, that's, we said all that too.
Is that the firm?
Yeah. Is that what, that's.
I think we actually have a policy on that regarding.
That's somewhere else.
What's the word? Give me one second.
I know school board members can't, but what about people at the podium?
Well, I don't think school board members in the past have never come to use that as a.
Well, it kind of, it kind of falls in this, um, campaigning on, you know, on school property kind of thing.
Yeah.
We have some of that language. I don't need to find it, but.
I, I think we, I think the point is that we won't introduce a timeline, excuse me, days ahead and all these scenarios, but we still want to keep the respect part and the language part and the order, keep things in order. That's why this was even looked at. It's not just Amherst that's looking at that.
Well, I'll make a motion to retain the current policy for public comment.
No second? No second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay. So now we have RFP update, Dr. Wells.
Yes, sir. So we are currently still in the negotiation phase with the selected company, uh, firm, so we are actually, we meet with them again next week to kind of look at the, uh, more initiative pricing and kind of sharpen the pencil a little bit and see where we can get the best deal of what we have. But again, this is, this right now is to do the design phase work and meet with the community, community.
My glasses keep boggling up, excuse me.
Meet with the community and input from them and input from the board. So that's kind of where we are right now, was hiring a firm. But again, it is for the design phase, not to start construction until, you know, any of that type of work, it's just more to get community input and make sure we're moving the, the project in the right direction.
I think we ended a conversation last time for clarification, so it's the board clear on.
And the fact that we're still currently in negotiations, can't give it so much detail.
We have not signed a contract at the moment.
Okay.
Okay, um, finance, Ms. Crouch.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, you have at your place the proposed budget calendar for the twenty-three school year. This is just a proposed document, we will bring it back at the next board meeting for your approval. It just outlines when our public hearing will be, when our budget is due to the board of supervisors, when their budget, uh, when their public hearing is due, and then when they will approve the budget. And this is a long session for the general assembly, it's a sixty-day session.
I feel like we just did that.
And they are in the re-benchmarking process, so our composite index could change sometime in November and we will keep you updated on that information.
Any questions from Ms. Crouch? Budget, my goodness. Dr. Norman?
It is all on the.
Mr. Neighbors.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Neighbors.
Good evening, and chair members of the board, it is on me this evening for the academics component. And on the August twelfth meeting, uh, there was a question brought up about the S R three plan, specifically the component of the plan that was intended to address the academic, social, emotional, mental health needs of students, required component of that plan. And CASL, the organization, was referenced within that plan, there's some questions about the nature of that and what specific supports and strategies have been identified for dissemination through counselors to staff. There was an email that was sent following that on eight seventeen clarifying some of those components, and a part of that email, we offered to bring in the true expert in this particular area that we have here in Amherst, Ms. Stephanie Mallon-Camp, to actually present to the board the information that she was able to pull together and has presented to counselors. So we wanted to give her the opportunity to share that with you this evening for you all to hear that, just something, ask any questions you might have as a part of that. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Mallon-Camp and let her take you through that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to speak with you about the training I provided and give you further clarification on anything you're wondering about and answer any questions you may have. I want to start by just, again, clarifying the source of the three signature practices that I trained counselors on, um, which is CASL, C A S E L dot org. That stands for the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. It's a group that is really considered the go-to for anything regarding social, emotional learning, lots of research, lots of best practices, and all evidence-based. So, um, and when we're talking about social, emotional learning in this space and in this training, it's really about setting the tone in the classroom, creating a, a climate and culture that is conducive for student success. Um, and the other piece of that is just providing an opportunity for students to learn and practice skills that will serve them throughout their lives. And the other intent of this training was to utilize practices that are really best practice and good teaching strategies that many of our teachers are already incorporating in their instruction, but just perhaps tweak the intent of some of those practices so that, um, they can be utilized to better support students. So I just want to briefly talk you through the training I provided. If at any time you have questions, or before I start, if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those at any time.
Question already, you have already providing, teaching this to some of our teachers or counselors or?
So I provided this training to counselors and the idea was for them to then take it back to their staffs.
And this is all part of that grant that, that S?
So just to provide clarity on that, that's a good question. So no money was spent on any of this.
But this is all connected to that grant? That's the first time we heard of the CASL program is when we were talking about that grant?
Yes, in the grant under S R three, it actually, twenty percent of the funding must be spent on instructional practices throughout. So there's four components, I believe, that, that we could spend the money on or we had to support through the S R funds, and I don't have that directly in front of me. But one of those components was social, emotional learning, that where the federal government says in order to receive these funds, this is what you must adapt to. In order to make sure we had, we were even able to start that process, we had to be able to have some kind of foundational understanding for everybody that was just good instructional practices.
So that grant then is then connected to the CASL?
The C A S E L, yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, I remember when we were voting on that grant, I asked about the, the CASL, the C A S E L, and I was told that, that we could take that out at a later date, we did not have to.
So I would suggest that you watch this and, because we're not talking about curriculum here.
Right.
We're just talking about instructional strategies.
Oh, I'm just talking about what I asked about last time, and then later on I received the emails stating that we were already having our counselors do this. I was upset over it, I'm sorry.
Well, I would ask that you just let her present and then we can go back to it.
Okay.
Because I, we want you to know exactly what we're doing.
So laying the foundation for what this, what we were covering in this training, talking about the why, introducing the three signature practices, and then digging into each of them. The first signature practice is the welcoming activity, uh, and the second is engaging strategies, and then the third is an optimistic closure. And then a, a piece that is not tied to CASL was student check-ins, just asking teachers to provide a few moments during the beginning of the day for students to complete some sort of check-in so that any student who needed to speak with a school counselor or adult they trust would have that opportunity during the school day. So why? Obviously, we're in a pandemic. Life is typically not always easy anyway, but things have been really hard for lots of families, for our staff, um, for our students. And so understanding that and wanting to make sure that we create an, an, a space, um, where students feel safe and able to learn, right? And willing to try and sometimes fail forward, as we say, make mistakes but learn from those, those kinds of opportunities. But also understanding that we come into the school building our whole selves. So whether we have things going on outside of school or not, if we do, we're bringing those things with us, they don't just go away, right? And so, um, just trying to have opportunities for, for students to feel good about being at school. Also, um, these, these practices are directly tied to the five Cs, which we understand is a big goal of our, um, division, to prepare students to be life-ready, um, being able to communicate, collaborate, um, think critically and creatively, and be good citizens. So these practices are a way for us to help students learn skills that will help them in this area. And then, as I said, these three signature practices are really good, sound instructional practice, and it's just a matter of tweaking the intent so that, um, we're giving students opportunities to practice skills that will help them, um, be successful academically, but also beyond the school walls. And also, these are directly tied to, uh, the ABCs of an effective learning environment. So A standing for autonomy, um, which is the need for us to feel empowered, to be able to make our own decisions, to feel like we have our own self-control. That B, sense of belonging, um, we, we all need to feel accepted and valued by others as our true selves. Building that confidence, uh, knowing that we're feeling effective and able to accomplish goals that we set out to. So those three signature practices tie very directly to these, these ABCs. And I would just also posit that, um, when we think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the ABCs are tied into that hierarchy of needs too, so we're really effectively providing for, um, the needs of our students. I think it's also important for, um, students to have the ability, sometimes we're not having a good day and we're not willing to participate, so just really upfront establishing that it's okay to pass sometimes. We want participation, but sometimes that's not always possible. So again, these are the three signature practices. This is not a curriculum, it's not a program, these are good strategies or practices. And again, knowing the level of stress that our staff is under as well, we didn't want one more thing. So this was a way for us to incorporate things that they're probably already doing, but giving them a way to use those things, maybe with a little slightly different intent. So this just breaks down a, a couple, like, facts about each of these signature practices. There's a lot, I will say, there's a lot of overlap in terms of, a lot of times an activity can fit in more than one category, okay? But welcoming activities are usually fairly brief. It's just a way to get this, the day or that particular class period started, um, and a goal of building community in the classroom. Engaging strategies, they are really hopefully tied to whatever is being discussed in the class, um, and really trying to anchor that thinking, and sometimes it could even be providing a little extra processing time. For me as a student, that was something I always needed and I was embarrassed to ask for, but sometimes that can be very valuable to our students, just to give an extra like ninety seconds to think about what we just discussed, you know? Um, and optimistic closure, just to provide a little clarity on this, it sounds really like fake happy, right? But no, this isn't about, um, a cheery ending as much as it is. But no, this isn't about a cheery ending as much as it is providing an opportunity for students to get excited or empowering them to want to learn more about whatever you're discussing. So, this video really is a nice, about four-minute, just brief overview of those three signature practices. Unless somebody really wants to see it, I don't really, I don't want to take up your time, but I'm happy to share that with you.
I'd like to see it as possible.
Okay.
As schools across the country continue to create innovative ways to connect with students and that they plan for the fall, as organizations think about ways to build community amongst their staff, or even if families build new rituals in challenging times, the SEL three signature practices are one tool to help foster supportive environments and embed social emotional learning competencies. For many CASSEL partner districts, these practices have become the anchor for integrating SEL into daily experiences for adults and for youth. These three signature practices are: one, begin with a welcoming inclusion activity, routine, or ritual. That builds community and connects to the work or the day ahead. This might look like greeting each person by their preferred name, whether that's in a classroom or a chat room. Whole group activities where individuals can reflect on a success or a challenge they've had that day. Morning circles that allow individuals to collectively share or problem solve. Our second strategy is embedding engaging strategies. These strategies offer many opportunities to practice SEL skills. We recommend thinking about a balance between interactive and reflective strategies to reflect the needs of all participants. You could try Think, Ink, Pair, Share. This is where you have time to reflect, write, and then share in pairs or groups. Private Think Time or Mindful Minute Brain Breakers. The third signature practice invites facilitators to close each experience in an intentional way with an optimistic closure. This is not necessarily a cheerful ending, but rather highlights an individual and shared understanding of the work ahead. Examples of optimistic closures are one-minute accolades, where you set aside a minute to share out loud, compliments for your team, or to chat them into a virtual meeting. You can start with sentence stems such as "I'm curious about," or "As a result of this meeting, here's something I will do differently," or "Something I'm still questioning." Why do we do this? This simple framework sets a tone for our learning and the interactions that we have as we launch a day. Our goal is to purposefully and thoughtfully design each element to connect to a particular outcome. Adults and students walk into work, home, and schools with their full selves, particularly in challenging moments of social upheaval. These practices allow for that full complexity. They establish a safe container for equity of voice, for truly seeing one another, and for celebrating our strength. By integrating moments of reflection, positive interactions, and appreciations, we craft the climate and culture we are striving for, one in which everyone can feel they belong to a safe and caring community. We hope that you will try these practices to build connection, resilience, and community in any context in which you find yourself. Please let us know if you do at hashtag CASSELcares.
So, at this point, we dug into each particular strategy. So, welcoming activities, and as you heard in the video, sometimes they could be routines or rituals. We understand that structure is really helpful for our students, because that does provide a sense of safety as well, knowing what to expect, right? So, that's kind of where some of these activities fall in. Something as simple as the teacher being at the door and greeting every student by name is huge. Many, many students, in my experience as an acting school counselor in a school building, didn't often hear their names. So, it's very important, we, that's our identity, right? So, something as simple as making eye contact with each student and calling their name and saying, "How are you this morning?" You know? And you've probably seen the cool videos where they made handshakes for each kid, or there's also, like, class greetings that some teachers have done. There's all kinds, there's all kinds of possibilities. But these establish that safety and predictability, and they help set norms for respectful listening. They encourage that connection, that sense of belonging. These are just examples, like I was saying, smiling and greeting each person by name, or a whole group greeting. Activities where you're connecting students to each other. I'm someone who, you know, trying to find those common bonds. Morning meetings or advisory time, which we've utilized. These are just two examples. I gave them an opportunity to make choice with each activity, and we actually practiced them. I modeled for them just how I thought it would be impactful for them to train their staff. So, they could either choose to create a playlist of three songs that kind of define their life right now, and then we could discuss that. Or an animal toss game. They chose animal toss game, and so, that's a really fun activity where you take an animal and you're actually saying each other's names. So, I'm Stephanie tossing to Ms. Ligon, and Ms. Ligon tossing to, you know? And so, you would just use one animal at first, and you would toss to each other until everyone around the circle had gotten an opportunity to catch the animal. And then, you would start again, and you would always toss to the same person, so that repetition will help you learn at least that one name, right? Obviously, this is a good beginning-of-the-year activity, but it also, like, then we would start introducing other animals. And so, it also requires a good bit of focus in order to keep maintaining that, so that you're continuing to toss to the same person and be aware of when another animal is coming your way, being tossed to you. So, it was a really fun activity, and it was really fun to see our staff laughing and having a good time together. So, and I could see where our students would enjoy that too, so, great way to break the ice. Any questions about welcoming strategies? And I don't want to take up too much time either, so if I need to wrap it up?
Good, and I just got through them.
Okay. The welcoming strategies, would that be just in the morning or before every class?
So, later, I kind of speak to that in this presentation, but that's an excellent question, because I think it could be used at the beginning of your class period, right? It doesn't have to necessarily be at the beginning of the day. So, it could be at the beginning of a class period.
It's really nothing more than when I was a middle school teacher 29 years ago, I learned every kid's name and something that they were interested in. You think that that's a small thing, but understand, not all of our teachers do that. And what we're trying to do is make our children feel welcome in our building, because not all of our children feel welcome in our building. And so, that's what we're talking about. These are, these are best practices, but our teachers have been through a lot in the last 18 years, ah, 18 months, feels like 18 years. But we need them to be intentional about reconnecting to kids, because they've been like this for 18 months, right? That's been how kids have spent their life for the last, I mean, more so than ever. And so, what we're trying to do is say, "Hey, teachers, really go out of your way to connect to kids." Because when they feel better, she mentioned sense of belonging. I did my dissertation on sense of belonging, because it's so important for kids to feel like they're a part of something. And when they feel like they're a part of something, then they can start learning, so...
In the spirit of just your question, I think we see a lot of differences with the different grade levels, so elementary school where they're with the same teacher throughout the day, you might see that more in the form of a morning meeting or something that initiates the day, as opposed to the secondary level where they're changing classes, each individual teacher would have their own welcoming activity with that, and that's usually how we see that.
I just see how far we're behind right now in academics with everything going on with COVID and taking time out of the day to animal toss. I, I'm not a touchy-feely person when it comes to this stuff, and I just...
So, I think you need to realize where our kids are in terms of their, their own mental health. We are seeing just terrible situations that kids are experiencing. And if they don't feel comfortable, they're not going to learn. So, if you jump right into learning for 90 minutes, you probably wasted it on some kids. You have to connect to them at some point. So, if it's two minutes, if it's five minutes, it is going to make the next 85 or, yeah, 93 minutes better for those kids.
But in the animal toss, maybe something you might do the first day of school, the second day, when you first get them into your classroom, not something you would do every day, but that's just one of the examples.
Right, for sure. It's certainly not something that we do each time.
And we used to call it like an attention gainer, when you're given a period, you never opened up with the lesson, you did something to break the ice, and I think this is kind of a break the ice kind of, and it does, it really, it gets engaged, it releases tensions, and opens the environment for learning.
Well, I would include as well, I know at the elementary level, a lot of our special education classrooms, morning meetings takes on a lot of academic qualities as well. So, thinking about some of the calendar math components that are brought into that, it's not just that community building piece, it's communication that's worked on, there's a lot of academic skills in addition to those five Cs and the rest that can be brought in over time, certainly.
Yeah. And just to provide further clarity, none of these require a whole lot of time, and there's benefit even for students who may not have issues outside of our classrooms, but many of our students come to school, even thinking about the past 18 months, grieving family members or friends, you know, maybe they've been at home and in situations that are completely unhealthy or not good. So, just providing a safe space and giving them that sense of safety is so important so that they can learn, because if basic needs are not met, they will not learn. We know that, and there's a lot of research about that. So, engaging strategies, again, connect to our learning, so they're trying to make some kind of meaning out of what we're learning while we're having a good time. Again, fostering empowerment and collaboration, and like I mentioned earlier, providing, sometimes providing space and time for some processing of whatever's been discussed. These are just examples. Some were mentioned on the video just like this. And these were two different activities that I offered. One was coloring, coloring pages that just have positive self-m messages on them. The other was mindful moments, which I brought samples if you'd like to look at. And also, Fit Boost cards. They're just little activities that were like 30-second activities that got them up and moving or thinking about something. Optimistic closure, again, we're reinforcing the lesson topic. We're reflecting on whatever we've learned. We're trying to create momentum and get them excited about taking further action in their journey. So, these are examples. These were the two options I provided, a snowstorm, where you actually write down what you learned, ball it up, throw it in the middle, and then each student would pick up whatever snowball is nearby and read it out loud. The other is Suit Yourself, where you use play cards, and each suit gets a different question tied to their learning. So, when, when am I supposed to do this, right? With, with all the pressures of academics, when do I do this? You can build them throughout the day, build those practices in throughout the day as a part of daily lesson planning, but none of this was required. This was just a, here's one way that we know will work, that you can help create that sense of belonging, create that community in your classroom, but it was not, it's not required at all. This is just, here's a tool, if you'd like to utilize it. I thought this was really impactful. I saw this at a conference I went to a couple of years ago. 15,000 hours, that's how many hours a student spends with us if they're in school with us from kindergarten to graduation. That's an opportunity to go a little bit beyond just academic instruction, right? This is information on check-ins. Again, this was just a two-to-three-minute way for students to answer a few questions and let us know if they need to speak with an adult. This was just information on some additional training opportunities that were available the classroom-wise. I went through this, it's a free, it's, it's resources and modules that help inform about common mental health issues or strategies that might be impactful in the classroom that would be helpful for teachers. Nothing super in-depth. Youth Mental Health First Aid, Natalia, myself, and Lauren Kirchner are trained youth mental health first aid instructors, so we hope to be able to begin providing training for our staff and look for us for youth mental health. And then, sorry. On behalf? These were additional resources. That top link is the Signature Practices Playbook. It has lots of examples of the three practices in it. And then, there were two different planning tools that I provided, and that's just a link to this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Mallon, yeah, appreciate that. Certainly, the open any questions from the board. Obviously, we wanted to see what, let you see what Ms. Mallon Camp could present to the counselors, put that information out there. A lot of those practices are alive and well near West County Public Schools, but I do appreciate that Ms. Mallon Camp was really looking out, a way to make those intentional with the environment that we're in right now, have been at for 18 years, for the past 18 months. So, we certainly want to offer an opportunity to ask any questions while we have Ms. Mallon Camp here.
Board members' questions?
One, what type of feedback are you getting from the teachers?
I honestly have not heard anything at this point.
And I do want to clarify, Ms. Mallon Camp, has this gone to faculty yet? My understanding is you train counselors and they've been speaking with administrators. Has this actually gone to teachers as a...
I know Amherst Middle has been trained. I'm not, I'm not sure where we stand with that. I know Central has been trained, other than that, I'm not sure.
And essentially, it was discussed with the building administrator to determine how that was going to be.
Yeah. We also did not want to prescribe when this had to happen, or even, there's so many pressures on schools, but wanted to provide the tools and then allow them to make the decision as to when.
When did we train the counselors?
That was August, Teacher Work Week, so it would have been August the 24th, 25th. I'll be able to tell you if I can just look at my...
End of August anyways.
It was August.
And did you do the training?
Okay.
Are you the one that trained them?
Yes, ma'am.
And who trained you?
Well, I came up with this training based on my education as a school counselor and my experience in social emotional learning.
But you trained them in the CASSEL?
In the three signature practices.
So, I think it's important to clarify the training in CASSEL. We're talking about just the signature practices themselves. CASSEL is an organization that provided some of the visuals and some of the evidentiary support for that, some of the studies, and other things that went into it. Ultimately, Ms. Mallon Camp, with her training experience, was able to take some of those resources and extrapolate that into a training.
Okay, so you just took things from CASSEL, you were trained in that?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Can you explain the check-in, this closed gap folder?
Okay.
How are the students addressed for their check-ins, is what I guess I want to know.
So, I think most, again, that was a school decision, and I haven't heard back as to what each school's utilizing yet. There were two options. Closed Gap is a website that's completely free, but it requires parent permission, so anybody who was utilizing that understood they needed to send out notification and get permission for their students to participate in that program. The other, the other options were more either on paper or like a Google form, just very brief, "Are you worried about anything today?", those kinds of, just, "Do you need to speak with an adult?", that kind of thing, very basic, just to make sure we're not... One of my, prior to... One of my, prior to pre-pandemic, suicide was the second leading cause of death in youth ages ten to twenty-four. So, you know, I really want to make sure we don't miss any students who may be struggling with mental health issues or feeling very sad. So just wanting to put something in place so that we know our students are okay.
And I believe it was before the pandemic when we were at the BSBA conference, I believe Ms. Thompson, Ms. Wright, Ms. Ligon were there. And I think you, Ms. Thompson, saw that, that program on the training, the staff on how to be a person that will, will take a kid and help them get to the right places. I think it was, what, did they have like orange something?
The lanyard.
Yeah, so I think that's kind of, trying to set that environment, because I know you were interested in that. We're trying to set that environment so kids feel comfortable with going to somebody with their issues.
So, yeah, and I like the check-in practice. I was just thinking that if it's not, there's some uniformity to it, it's still on the teacher to get it to the right place, right?
So let me clarify that. School counselor and administration decide what they're using and then they disseminate that to their other teachers. So they won't have to come up with anything. It's just a matter of that school making a decision.
And speaking as a secondary teacher, I appreciate that because I think the most common occurrence for me was having a relationship with the student and understanding that they were in a place where they needed support. And I didn't know what my avenue was to connect them with that support. And I could have those conversations with the family, have those conversations with the student. But having that system in place, I think, is vital to really get us to a place where we've built that climate and culture where we can help those students when they need it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, you have something?
Yes, I want to say thank you. I appreciate the intentionality of taking time to find those students that need some mental health and directing them individually to those places and those resource people. And so from that perspective, I can see how this could be beneficial. My reason for asking about how teachers felt about it was, I'm seeing the slide that the student can verbally say, I pass, or please come back to me. And it sort of sounds like this utopia, you know? Yes, I might not be feeling like I want to do my work today and I'm emotional, I'm going to pass. Well, I might find out that I'm going to pass tomorrow too because I got out of work. So you know where I'm going? Okay, so when we have students that are empowered to say pass, are we letting them pass day after day after day and not do their work? What do we do? How do we get them back on track? Because I would love to live in this utopian world and say that the children are going to handle this and they're going to sit there and say, I don't feel well, I'm going to pass today, and tomorrow I'm going to give a hundred and fifty percent. My experience is the majority that I'm going to pass tomorrow.
Right.
So I'm concerned for our children's mental health, yes. But I'm also concerned of what we're teaching our children and are we giving them the grit that they need to also move forward? You know, do they know how to handle expectations as they're going down the road? So where's the balance, I guess, I'm asking?
I think the balance is me. If I can be perfectly frank, the training that I provide in regards to how we handle behavior in classrooms. And I think that's where what I do through nonviolent crisis intervention, but also my work with faculties, being able to complement this because there's an intentionality and a creation of a safe space in what Ms. Mallon Camp is talking about. What I talk about is behaviors, including refusal, including passive refusal, where even if we're using the process already established within a classroom, teachers need to understand their students. And a big part of even what Ms. Mallon Camp is presenting, this is about bringing students forward and having them participating more regularly. So while we give that option to pass, ultimately, the goal is to ensure that students are engaged in the classroom and they are participating. If we have a student, even if it's passive and refusing to do work consistently day over day every day, that's where some of the strategies that I work with come in, how do we work with that student to bring them forward?
Can you give me an example of what you do for that student?
Yeah, so when we're talking about engagement strategies, ultimately, what we talk about is what's called setting limits. So if the expectation can't be met, or they choose not to meet those expectations, we provide a choice, okay? Just so happens that both choices lead to the same outcome, which is my expectation, okay? Being able to provide that opportunity, even at a very small level, to make a choice. Providing that opportunity for momentum to be built towards compliance, that usually moves those students off of that. If we move further down into refusal, or we're not going to continue to do that, that's where we set other expectations. We set if and when, if and then statements, we set conditional statements. There are penalties that are involved in some of those things, and that's just basic classroom discipline and structure along those lines. But ultimately, putting some of those strategies in place to move that student if they're having trouble moving themselves.
I would also think that it gives you, the teacher, an opportunity, because if this happens a couple of times, to be able to say, what's going on? Can we get the appropriate resource to this student? Because there might be a actual reason, right? It might be a mental health reason, but it might be just a non-compliance. So you quickly, I mean, almost diagnostic, right? You almost can figure out by what the student is doing, like, say, I'll pass, you know, and I do it the next day. Then you're going to start bringing resources in too to determine whether it's real issue or they're just being non-compliant.
And a big part of what we talked about, and Ms. Mallon Camp used the word intentionality, I talk about being observant. So seeing what students are doing day over day from a behavioral standpoint as a teacher. I can't ignore the fact that, well, Ms. Thompson, you passed every single day this week, so today I'm going to need something with you. I'm not having that conversation in front of the entire class.
Right.
I'm having that conversation with you when you come in the class, say, it's Wednesday, you passed Monday, Tuesday, I really want to hear something from you today. Let me know what I can do to help you be a part of the conversation. You let me know when you're ready to do that, but I expect to hear something from you today.
And I don't think it's passing doing academic.
Yeah, that's why I was confused. I thought it was, I interpreted it as passing for the rubber neck, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, it's just kind of trying to connect with your other classmates. You might be, I'm not there today.
Because I agree with Ms. Mallon, like, I'm not my supervisor. I don't feel like doing this report today. I thought he tomorrow.
But you might be able to say, I don't want to go have cake.
That's right, that's right.
I was a bit more along the lines of they didn't want to share out loud in front of classmates, which, again, we're talking about building skill there. We need to work towards that.
Any other concerns or conversations for Mr. Neighbors or Ms. Mallon Camp? So I imagine the reason for this session on this was that concern about Castle. Somebody brought that up or not?
I did.
Questions have been answered?
I still have grave concern about the website. I have grave concern about who's putting this out and the consequences in life. What I've seen you present today, I think it is good for our kids' mental health. I think it is good teaching. It's what we should be doing anyway without being taught to do it.
Sure.
You've already heard my concern, just a little bit, like last year when we started with this and we were doing a lot of social emotional and we weren't getting to that academics. It's just making sure we're balancing, making sure that we're not giving our kids so much safe space that they just feel like they can plop out and not do anything. We've got to train them to meet the expectations of the world too, so.
I agree with that.
And so for me, I appreciate this. I feel better. But I do want to dig in more because I don't want to see what I see on that website popping up in our schools.
So we are telling you exactly what we're using.
I understand.
That's it.
And that, based on what I'm hearing you say today, if it's used in the right way, I would be in support of that. But that's where it came from, Ms. Ligon.
Just trying to get clarification so we all can be on the same page. Any other questions on the presentation for tonight? Ms. Wright, Ms. Berg?
I'm good for now. I am in agreement with Mrs. Thompson. I looked at the website before. I'm not like the website. I just see us going down a path that we went down last year. I want to get back to academics. And I was a little taken back by Dr. Arnold's comment when he said all our teachers aren't learning our student names and having that connection with the students.
It's making connections with our students because, as I told you all at the last board meeting, our teachers are overwhelmed as well.
Oh, I agree.
Well, but I'm just saying, what practice do you not agree with? You don't like the website, but that's not what, we're not giving the website out to our, we're using practices that are just what this group has given us.
Well, when we first went through the grant, I mentioned Castle. We said we weren't going to be using it. We could vote on it before we did use it, and then I find out that we were already giving it to our counselors and it just, everything just seems like a slippery slope.
Specifically, what you don't like about the strategies?
I just, I think it's a leftist ideology. You're pushing on the kids and I don't like that.
To connect with kids?
Well, again, go to the website and look. I encourage parents to go on the website and look.
And you need to listen.
It seemed like it was very slanted to me.
Well, that's what the website is. We're talking about a resource from this group.
It's the website, Castle, that we're talking about. It's their website.
Yeah, I understand that. The resource is from all over the place, okay? The resources that we're being.
I thought we were discussing Castle.
I think they were discussing what's being actually taught.
Yeah.
Just to provide a clarification so that, yeah, absolutely, there was something on the website that I didn't agree with either. But I feel comfortable thanking Ms. Mallon Camp for sharing what's going on. That, I mean, that's what's important so that to clear up the confusion is that we actually know what's being taught, what's being done. These strategies, I agree with Ms. Berg's comment early. I don't want to make sure that there's a balance there, that you're not losing a lot of that academic time. But I do think, I can't, I mean, just going somewhere and somebody calls your name out, I mean, just as an adult, it's nice to know, you know? So I can, so those kind of strategies, sometimes you got to be reminded that they're good things, so it doesn't hurt for the reminder.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you, Ms. Neighbors.
All right, we go to human resources with the emergency sick leave and post grievance procedures.
Anyway, I'll try to talk louder. I don't know if that's on. Turn our attention to employee supports related to COVID. So Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, even. So I have provided to you all what you had requested. As you remember, at the September board meeting, we approved some emergency sick leave policy for Amherst County Public Schools that was relatively limited. It was what we kind of had come up with last year, and it is already in place as of October 1, if nothing else changes. And the FF-CRA that's been in place, still, we believe that's going to end September 30, and we've not heard otherwise. So, and Mr. John Greiser, there's your name. You had initially, I think, asked us to come up with some thoughts and additional ideas. And the rest of you also have thought that we might want to further support our employees beyond what we approved in September. So what I gave to you here was about the most expansive and comprehensive proposal. Thinking I can give you the biggest picture of what we may want to consider providing and then discuss it and discuss the financial implications and decide what we might want to, you know, cut back from this proposal. So again, we have a policy in place. That was in place as of the September board meeting, which covered number one right there that you see. And that's all that it covered, and it's ten days of emergency sick leave, which is good. And those are for situations where employees are quarantined by the local school division because they're considered close contacts. And that was some protections that were put into place. The FF-CRA that we're losing was much more broad, and what I provided you was somewhere in the middle. So I added two, three, and four for additional contingencies and different situations that you may want to consider, whether or not you add these to what we cover as reasons for being approved to take emergency sick leave. So you can look through what those are, and those are all included in the FF-CRA. But I did not include all of the things that are covered in FF-CRA in this document. I did also provide at your desk a copy of the FF-CRA request form that shows the different things that are covered there. So if you ever wanted to cross-reference and see what we are or are not providing. So these four would cover a pretty broad amount of different situations that could come up. I also wrote in here in this one, which is expansive, twenty days, because you all had mentioned, may we consider adding additional days beyond ten? So the two things we said we could change, number of days and the situations that are covered. So this gives us our broadest view for discussion and consideration, and we can taper that back or we can stick with what we currently have, which is essentially number one for ten days. We also wanted to talk a little bit about the financial implications of this.
Ms. Crouch and I have been doing some math today. And so last year, we had, let's see, what's the number? Thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-three days that we had to pay for substitutes, which comes out to two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars is what we paid for out of our budget. This year, so far, in six weeks, we've had three-hundred-and-sixty-three days. So if you extrapolate that out to the whole year, we're looking more at four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars. Our budget budgets for three-hundred-thousand dollars. So there is a financial implication, and we don't have the federal support to help cover that, right? So I think you just needed to know those numbers so you can make an informed decision on this. We're not sure how we would find it in the budget, but.
Dr. Arnold, the numbers that you just gave us, is that just cumulative of how many substitutes we had?
That was all COVID.
COVID?
COVID-related.
So when I'm looking on this proposal, one, two, three, and four, it would be under all four of those conditions or just the first one?
No, this would be covered for all. This was FF-CRA, so it's actually this probably plus, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
These are last years.
These three-hundred-and-sixty-three that I quoted fit in one of those four categories.
Yes, I'm sorry.
But like if we were to go with, just say, just number one, we wouldn't have as many?
I would anticipate that's correct.
The issue with the substitute, and if I'm thinking about this wrong, their substitutes, because they're quarantined and they can't be here, or they contracted, correct?
Right, if they, if they.
So that's not going to change no matter what.
Right, but that's what's happening. So, and we're talking about if you can work, right? If you can work, those don't count as days. And so these three-hundred-and-sixty-three days don't even count when teacher is doing synchronous learning from home.
That's right.
So is the inference then that allowing these extra days will entice someone to not come to work? Is that what, is that what you're?
No, I'm not, I'm not making an inference. I'm just doing math. I just want you all to know what, if we keep this pace, this is where we'll end up.
So in other words, we're outpacing.
That's a worst-case scenario. I understand that. But I also, I don't know. I don't know where it's going to go.
Mr. Crouch, are you saying that even if we didn't adopt this policy, that the faculty will still have to go out under these conditions?
The number that you're getting.
And we'll still have to be providing substitutes. The only thing that this policy would do would make the teacher use their sick leave.
Right, it's a, it's a, that's basically a free benefit, it's a paid benefit without them using their sick leave if they're out under FF-CRA or our policy.
Because if they go beyond their actual sick leave days, then, Theresa, when they, they're out the day beyond what they have, then what's the practice?
They get stopped.
See, I understand what you're saying.
Their pay gets stopped.
That's what I was trying to avoid. Like, if they, if we, if they contracted and they're, you know, how many times a year, and they're forced to do the isolation, that I didn't want to see them losing out because if they contracted to work. But I, but I was saying, the substitute number's not going to change because if we're following CC guidelines, they're going to be out no matter what. We still got to have a.
The benefit we do have this year is the vaccine. So unless they're displaying symptoms and they're vaccinated, they would not necessarily have to quarantine. If they're symptomatic, they would, if they get it, because they do have breaks in cases.
And I'm violating my own HIPAA, but I had it the other week, and I had no symptoms, and I didn't even realize it, and I stayed in an attic for two days. So I'm just saying, so I don't even know if that's the right guidance half the time because you're still spreading.
I agree, but that's.
I got, I got you. I know what we're following.
Well, and despite that fact, we're still outpacing last year when we didn't necessarily have vaccinations, so.
Maybe what I'm thinking is, like, this is your, your decision, right? And the last time we talked is we would give ten days and then we could look at something else. Maybe we can give you better data points down the line to make a more, you know what I'm saying? Because all I'm counting is the first six weeks, right? And it was terrifying. So maybe six weeks from now, we will make sure that nobody at that point is going to get hurt financially.
That's what I was curious was, is there, is there situations now, you run across employees at this point, at this stage in the game, that are running that risk with the docking or?
I'm sorry, before we go too far down, can you clarify the dollar figures you gave us? You said were substituted.
You said were substituted.
And what's the, what?
All right, so you go ahead. That's your right.
I can answer that while she's looking if you want. And that's basically, you're asking if somebody's any at risk at this point. We don't have anybody at risk. Most people have fallen within the FF-CRA at this point in time, which still exists till the 30th.
That's right.
So there have not been many cases of people using their individual leave. We have, the people most affected, quite honestly, are going to be the people who are earlier career teachers who have not built up a lot of sick leave and it's going to be used like that. Or employees, I want to say teachers or employees, you know, early career employees who have minimal, up to 10 per year. So if it's their first year, you approve 10 days and you can use those pretty quickly. Put you right to point.
So FF-CRA has covered everybody up to this point.
Yeah.
You guys voted on partial the 10 extra days to, so I think we can go a little further before we kind of get to that place where are we going to do more?
And my intention wasn't to go full gambit necessarily, give you all the options that I think are probably put us where, the extent of where we could go and look at maybe tapering back as need be. Because I think the concern that I heard was, I'm concerned, you know, that people are going to be impacted and run out of time and we're going to be having employees struggling and losing pay.
And it may be good. We wrote it last meeting, we were hoping we would know by this meeting that some more money, that something was going to be renewed or extended.
Which there's been no movement on that.
And, yeah, so that's what we were hopefully find out tonight. So since there's nothing, we might do something.
If we're looking for numbers to compare, you know, we hit the 30 mark last year in Novemberish timeframe, it's 30,400,000. So maybe we looked at how many people we had out around the 30,400,000 to 50,400,000 kind of where we are now. I was looking at those numbers as opposed to the first six weeks. Because the first six weeks, we had very few cases. We didn't start a case count. Last year didn't really jump until, up in November timeframe.
Sure.
So it may not be a true comparison, first six weeks this year to first, because we didn't really get our, hit our spike until November.
So what I'm doing though is that we did hit a spike last year. And her numbers are based on all of last year, right? So hopefully we have that downturn like we did last year. But I'm just saying at the current rate.
Could a portion of that 20% that's dedicated to education be technically used for substitutes?
I don't know that.
I can find out.
I mean, if, so far you're forecasting to be that, what, 150,000 over budget if we continue on the current trend?
So that's what I'm trying to figure out. The dollar figures you gave us are what?
Okay, so the dollar figures that we gave.
Yeah.
There was 1,383 days missed by our employees last year that were paid.
So is this sick pay or is this paid to subs?
No, this is a combination. It is paid to subs. It's not sick leave. It was time that we pay, it's this policy. We gave them time on the books. We didn't dock them. We didn't make them use sick leave. We followed the policy. And that's the 1,383 days. How many days our employees missed due to COVID?
So I'm still confused. Are the dollar figures, were they, is this money that was paid to teachers or is this money that was paid to subs?
274,000, oh, approximately 275,000.
Yes.
Of that, 40,000 was paid to subs.
Okay.
And the difference we paid to our employees and they did not have to use any sick leave.
Employees, yes. I know we use teachers, but yeah, employees.
Yes, employees.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to because the sub amount is going to be what it's going to be regardless of which one of these, any or all of these.
That's true.
The sub amount is not going to change because you can't say, well, we're only going to pay you sick leave if you, if you follow item one. And they say, well, we're going to have to stay at work then. They can't. They still have to go out. So I think it's going to matter to break it down that way.
Why, it's just 230?
Which is about approximately 230.
It would be 230 that was sick leave.
Yes.
Because the sub is a constant.
Because we're trying to determine the cost of this policy, which is related to sick leave. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's approximately $230,000.
Okay. And.
That's COVID related.
That's COVID related, right.
And that's only COVID related. This is not, does not account for the teachers who were at home and worked from home or the employees who were at home and worked from home. This is only those who took the COVID days.
And I also think it's important to remember, we have a lot of teachers that were already at home doing the remote academy. So they weren't, they weren't really impacted that way.
And that's.
It was only the, the folks that were in the building. They're all back in the building now.
And what else helped with the substitutes is that we hired five full-time substitutes who put help in the buildings. And when you calculate that, that's approximately $55,000 to $60,000 per substitute. So if you want to calculate that and use it in the days, and that money was covered with COVID.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
Well, I'm willing to, I'm willing to guess that between our vaccination policy about whether you're quarantined or not on that and that they can work from home if they're not sick and feel bad, it's going to be a wash. I think it's going to be about the same. So I don't think we're going to be hurt if we give additional time. I think it'll end up being the same or pretty close to it. I'm willing to wager we will not go over budget. Not going to put any collateral up.
That's, that's in the minutes.
I think you have a higher vaccination rate now, but you also have a higher risk of exposure with everybody being in person.
Well, that's true.
So it's a kind of maybe a balance.
But a quarantine, I mean, a vaccinated person possibly in quarantine unless, or not at all.
Unless they demonstrate symptoms.
Unless they demonstrate symptoms.
Catch it, yeah, correct.
Dr. Arnold, has the AEA weighed in on any of these policies?
They have not. They, they told me that they were going to bring me something that had more to do with like a sick bank. But that has some, some issues as well. And because we don't currently have a sick bank, what you were, tell me, tell them what you were telling me about sick bank.
So several years ago, prior to the hybrid, the RS plan, we did have a sick leave bank. And it was for long-term illnesses. And all of our employees contributed or those who wanted to participate contributed a day of their sick leave to go into the bank. And that was pre-hybrid. With hybrid employees, which are our newer employees and probably have been about eight years, nine years, when they are out over five days or seven days, they get a disability and we have to pay them sick leave after that. They don't have to use their sick leave. We have to pay them disability.
It's like 50 or 60%, isn't it?
It's 67% to start with, yes, sir. And that can be up to 90 days. Long-term, they go into long-term disability and we no longer pay them through the insurance. And when that happened, it's, it would be a different benefit for employees in a hybrid one or hybrid two versus, I mean, Plan One or Plan Two versus the hybrid plan. And so we just, the board at that time decided to dissolve the sick leave bank and we returned what was left to, in the bank and gave them back to the employees.
So I think, what do you ask them to do?
Oh, no, I was just telling, I was just telling her what the A in.
Oh, oh, okay.
Is that fairly correct?
I have not been a part of the conversation that you may have had with whoever you had the conversation with.
Yeah, I actually spoke to Ms. Berg.
From what I understand, is not what we had planned to approach the administration with.
Okay.
But being as I haven't had a conversation with all parties involved, I can't.
I talked to the president today.
I can't really say that.
Yeah. I mean, that's what she was saying they were contemplating.
It was not my understanding that it was a sick leave bank in any way, shape, or form. So if.
No, I'm, I'm saying that was an idea.
Yes, so it may, that may be some confusion.
She was just clarifying. You were just clarifying.
Yeah, just clarifying what the issues surrounding sick banks are.
Oh, okay, okay, I got lost in that.
Based on what you said about the hybrid employees, those, the younger employees, if they were to be in quarantine and be out, there's going to be a certain point in which they receive disability? Is that what you said?
Disability will only be for, and that's what I was saying to Dr. Arnold today. I do not know if quarantine would meet the disability. If I am on hybrid and I am a mother who was giving birth after five days, I can access my disability. But to be out for just for 10 days, I'm not for sure if that's going to become a disability. And I would have to do some more research on that. And I would be scared to answer that question.
Well, that might be good to know because you might be able to develop two policies, one for hybrid one, one for hybrid two, you know, giving a little bit more benefit for those that, to make it more equitable for each of those.
Does a sick leave compensate that 67% while they're in the short-term status? I was trying to remember what the details of that was.
It all depends on how many days you have. And some employees choose not to, because remember, you're talking about new employees who may only have 10 days.
Right.
So you would only, you would use a third of it, a sick leave for every day you're out in order to bring it up to 100%.
So that you don't lose pay.
And so if you're out for a long term, that would only mean that you would be out for 30 days of school in order to get your, and some employees decide not to accept, to use their sick leave to balance that out.
Which would be another benefit to add in the sick days that they had that they could supplement that short-term disability on the hybrid plan so that they're 100% able.
So I guess what you have to decide, I guess, tonight is, do you want what Mr. Gallagher proposed? We just wanted you to have the information that we have.
And I understand that it wasn't necessarily strongly proposed and we'd go the full gambit. Just giving you the outskirts of what I feel like it wouldn't be the total. We asked to expand days. Now, let's see what that looked like. We did 20, that's 100% increase and we could go back to 10, start there. And then I added these characteristics. The first one was already in place, probably impacts unvaccinated individuals more so. But the second two are for any individual and whether or not they begin developing symptoms because they were a contact here or not, it's hard, you can't really tell. It's possible. And the one I've probably heard the most on as far as people wishing they had that continued was the one about childcare situations where a child might be quarantined and they don't have, they can demonstrate that there's a hardship in finding any kind of childcare. So that's why those are all put there, the ones that are probably most impactful, prevalent. And the days is something you can discuss and modify. I just put the outer limit when we talked about potentially looking at increasing those number of days. Or also in October, all those, so, you know.
Right.
And any days that we put in place, of course, if something does come after the 30th, if we do get some extension, that would always be used first as a practice, right?
And basically for, that is correct. And then, and other potential reasons, as you see the language at the bottom, that would be the discretion of the board if you chose to discontinue this.
Yeah.
Something unforeseen or something new that comes out, I don't know.
Oh, boy, yeah.
And I understand the reasons of why there's a need for number one, two, three, and four. But the one that hits my heart the most is number one, when an employee is told to stay home and we're the one who's telling them to stay home and we're making them use sick leave. So I understand them all, but I guess if I had to prioritize, that would be my priority, more days than number one. But I know that there's needs.
Yeah, well, number one, so think about it in terms of what you shared with us. You're being quarantined, but you didn't have any symptoms. People like that can actually continue to do their job and not have to take sick leave. So when we, when we went remote learning for the two middle schools and the high school earlier in the year, all the teachers continued to teach, but they did it, they did it synchronously. So that will, that will help a little bit with that because we have that in place this year, which I think will help a good deal because a lot of these folks that are not symptomatic but are still being quarantined, they can continue to teach. Now, we do have to hire a sub to facilitate the classroom when students are there.
One of the things we looked at last year was not wanting to kind of reinforce bad behavior outside of school or somebody might not be following proper protocol. And in that case, you know, that was more, you know, prevalent because, you know, we didn't have that many folks all crammed together. So, you know, the, there's been outbreaks this year. So the, with all of us back in in-person and in close proximity, it just increases the potential exposure even within this environment with masks or otherwise. And I just wanted to throw that out there, some of the reasons that others still might get that without us quarantining them. You know, they may have come down with symptoms. It could be vaccinated, unvaccinated. The, the risk of exposure to me, I believe, increases within our environment this year because of the nature of the in-person instruction coming back full-time. ARA teachers that were remote all back in. So those were some of the factors why it might look a little different this year than mine.
You want a motion to keep those included or just push this forward? Because we're not, are we both on this tonight or is this?
No, we would bring.
That's your discretion.
We would bring it to the.
And truly, I think it's just whatever you all make of this and determine that you feel like is the best option and whether anything needs to be removed or modified prior to either holding and waiting or, or making a motion. I think that's really up to you all for, for discussion.
Would number one even need to be in there if they're going to be working from home anyways?
Not always because they could actually be sick.
And we got to remember.
Well, it just said if they're quarantined, okay, all right.
Yeah, because there, there could be two different things going on. They could actually be sick and not be able to.
Well, and also it's all employees, so not all employees have the capability of working from home.
Like bus drivers, for example.
Right.
Right.
Oh, yeah, because it's not just teachers.
Would it be appropriate for number two to, to put a timeframe on like the period to seek medical diagnosis or, you know?
Well, and typically what that means is you're being tested.
Okay. You're waiting on results.
Seeking a medical diagnosis means we, you know, you either, you know, you thought or you may have symptoms or are concerned and you sought testing. I think, William, would that be correct?
Yes.
You're being tested and usually if that's a PCR, it just takes a couple of days.
I want to make sure when I wake up on Monday night morning with the runny nose and I say, well, I'm just going to sit this out to Wednesday and then go get my test.
Well, so you're supposed to, what happens is by protocol, you would report to your supervisor. If they felt like it was anywhere close to the characteristic symptoms, they would recommend you contact your healthcare provider. And they typically suggest testing. And then you got a couple, and this happened last year, so you have several days waiting for the results. If the results come back that you're negative, you report back. If you still don't feel well, you take regular sick leave because it's not COVID related from there. But again, if it's positive, then of course we would kick in an additional, you know, quarantine based on, you know, when you first had symptoms and so forth.
Any other questions before we bring this, we're bringing this back to you?
It's, it's your discretion, that's your.
Yeah, if you want to change something, that's fine. If not, bring it to the October meeting and you can vote on it. Because if you have any clarifications or anything like that, in the meantime, we can get that for you before you have to vote on it.
Okay. Pretty clear, but we're bringing that, I mean, we'll talk about it on. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
What else you got?
Okay, moving past that. The only other item is just basically, I think there was a request and it made, I don't know if that was a joint request or how that came, but I know there was a question about wanting to take a look at, I think, the CTE new position, the grant-funded job descriptions. And Mr. Maddox, you have at your place had provided for me a basically outline of the necessity for the positions and what, what they were needed for that drove the job descriptions that you see behind that. So I just provided those for your review. And if there's any questions about those grant-funded positions based on that request, happy to answer any.
Any questions about that position of the board, Scott? Not any. Okay, moving on.
That's all I have.
Yeah, grievance.
Grievance is.
Oh, I apologize, I skipped right past that. That was not intentional. Run right through my package. That, that actually has not been modified since the last time we spoke. I think we just decided that, 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 the decision was to move that to discussion point at this meeting. And I don't have any changes, so it's up for discussion among the board members. Certainly, we can discuss. among the board members. But certainly we can discuss and answer any questions. In last meeting, I think I also had given you all some information from counsel, just talking about some perspective on implications of potential changes, just for your review and input as requested.
Yeah, can I?
I like the changes that you suggested and I think that that probably gets to the heart of some of the concerns I had. The only suggestions that I had that we might want to consider to add is a creation of just like a short step of the grievance process to where you can hand it to an employee because that policy is like 20 things long.
It's long, yeah.
You know, so and then maybe put something in the policy that they would receive it, you know, if they go to do their first grievance and you sit down with that third person, put that in their hands, you know, here's your next, so they know what the next step is. Because I hear a lot of times, I didn't know I could do it or I didn't know what the next step was. So we need to be informing, so just a short summary, make that go into their hands. And I would like to see, I don't know how the rest of the board would feel, maybe like an annual or bi-annual report of the grievances that are brought forward.
Numbers, so forth.
Yes, you know.
Sure.
You don't have to know the particular person, but the numbers and, you know, was there, how far did it get? Was there a resolution? But I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that.
Right.
Yeah, I definitely like giving it to something, especially if we modify the grievance policy or the summary with their contract every year, because I was surprised that several people commented they didn't even know there was a grievance policy. I mean, I know we tell them to look, but I think that's a good idea. I like that.
Is it right online where they can file their grievance? Is it spelled out somewhere or they're able to go and actually like have a friend help them go through it?
It is available on the on the website with the forms that they need. That's correct.
So am I going to make a motion?
Okay, I guess.
Um, so I'd like to make a motion that you just amend that to create a short summary of the grievance procedure and give it to each of the teachers with their contract and when they start a grievance procedure. And also add that we would receive at least an annual report of grievances brought forward.
So is the, is the annual report something that goes into policy? I mean, it's no issue. I just wondered, is that something you put into a policy as far as the annual reporting?
Yeah, I could do that.
It's up to you.
I guess I would assume so, so it would happen, but I don't know the legality of that.
Oh, sure. However.
Just a policy to say that we will be given a report.
Yeah, the board would be informed of this.
Just include that in the policy.
Just want to clarify the motion because I know we use teachers as a general term, but you don't just mean teachers.
Employees.
You are correct.
So it wouldn't be a contract, I don't know. It might be because custodians and.
Right, it would be all employees.
Are they given contracts each year?
Yes.
Are they doing contracts?
It's a contract. So, ma'am, let me make an amendment to my motion. I would amend the policy GBM to add a short summary of the grievance procedures. It will be given to all employees at the beginning of their contractual year along with their contract and upon any grievance that they may file, that they are also given that as a reminder. In addition, that the school boards will receive at least an annual report of any grievances that were brought forward, whether formal or informal.
Have the motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Has been properly moved and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Thank you.
And we can pull that language, I guess, off the recording so I can get that right.
So the last piece is under my superintendent's matters and it's the communication plan. Ms. Cecil sent you guys that with highlights because the the concern was what's the avenue for people to give you feedback, right? And so we put a overview statement and principles of communication to start. And then if you go into the other edition, it's cultivating strength in relationships with the school community to engage the district's vision, help them understand district beliefs and values, and ultimately engage in the mission by considering challenging, challenges and developing solutions. So I'll tell you where we, an example of that is that we in October, the first week of October, are having a superintendent's advisory council. It was put out to to schools that if people wanted to be on that, we're actually having to to kind of get some schools to find somebody to be a part of it. And we're going to send out a survey tomorrow. The the survey is basically, because I think the first thing we need to address is COVID-19 and what solutions can we have? Because all of the other issues, I think, are a result of the challenges that we have with COVID. So for example, the the ability to teach synchronously with kids in your classroom and kids sitting at home is a, is a very big challenge. But if we could get our arms around COVID a little bit better, then then we could get to that concern. Does that make make sense? So we're going to let every employee give their feedback. I'll get it next Friday, I'll distill it, and then this committee will meet to discuss those things. So that's an example of of that. We've also talked to some parents that want to also be a part of, it would be like a community or COVID solutions team, right? There that, there have been people that have said, you know, we have lots of parents that really want to help, but they don't know how to help. And so we're going to try to get that together. And so that's a community thing. So we're, we're starting to move forward to get that feedback and then to discuss solutions. With all of these things, we want to be solution oriented, you know, we want, we don't want to just come in and just say, this is problem. We want people to invest in the solution too. So that's, that's what, those were the things that were added. Are there any other questions about that?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do is bring it to.
For approval.
Yeah, October meeting, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Ligon, that's all the agenda items.
I think we've been pretty thorough. Don't we have any other items for the, for the work session is concerned? Ms. Wright?
I do not.
Ms. Barrett?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Surprise. Ms. Cussey?
Nope, good.
Go.
Terry?
No, ma'am.
With that said, we ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.